So you don't have the ordinance, and we have many people that is offering to write the ordinance for us, which I can only imagine how many people are getting in contact with you. And that, um, I forgot the last part. I almost had everything that you were gonna, that you said to repeat.
But I did reach out to Larry Sherman, who's the attorney for Madison Heights, the criteria that he looked at when drafting their ordinance.
Right.
I'm gonna try switching.
Okay, so anyone have any questions about the marijuana ordinance or the permit process update? I mean, to be answer to the best of our ability.
There is a question in the chat room from a resident.
Okay.
Lily and Laurie was asking if there's a plan to change the current ordinance to allow marijuana center in Lathrop Village. She couldn't hear.
We're not at that point yet. The whole point is that after, we're trying to extend the sunset. And we are also trying to put together a ordinance just in case the marijuana is approved to go into effect or to allow marijuana in the city of Lathrop. But nothing has been approved to have marijuana businesses here yet.
Yeah, we're current.
Or at all.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, next on the, up, wait a minute. I thought I saw something popping up. Nope, I didn't. Okay. Um, next, the road improvement, Bonneville Village update?
Yeah, not, not a whole lot to update there. It's going forward to get on the ballot. I've been working with Giffords and Webster to, if you remember, last year we had the Fix LV Roads website, which still exists, and so we're updating it. We've got all the new, it's, it's basically done at this point with all the new information related to this year's proposal. I just need to give it one more quick reread, proofread, to make sure that there aren't any typos or mistakes or anything, and then, and then we'll announce it. I think, I think Cheryl actually already put it out on weekly newsletter, which is fine, but I do want to give it one more, one more to look over, but it's, it's, it's ready to go.
Thank you. There are any other, anybody have any questions or concerns regarding that? Anything in the chat room? I see nothing. Next on the agenda is the traffic control ordinance. Oh, one second, I'm sorry. Will there be virtual community meetings regarding this proposal?
Yes.
To explain it, not to change it, though.
Yeah, yeah, so we, we had, um, you know, I don't remember exactly how many. We had about a dozen public meetings. You know, when we were crafting the proposal, once we had a crap, a few options crafted, we had either three or four virtual town halls to get additional input to help the committee decide which of the three options that we had come up with would, would be best for the city, and, and we took that input, and we made our, our final recommendation to council, which was approved of the ballot. So, so as Kelly said, there won't be any meetings to provide input for the proposal, but there will be informational meetings to explain what the proposal is, how it will affect residents, how much it will cost residents, you know, what roads will get done, what roads won't, what ditches will get done, and so forth. So basically, just like we did last, a year ago, to give an in-depth dive into the proposal, so residents are as informed as possible before they cast their vote.
Thank you.
And this document was excellent, Bruce, excellent. Is it, and, and again, this is on the website, or?
Yeah, it's, it's fixlvroad.com.
Yeah, it's, it's very, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then just going forward, just to follow the actual agenda, if there's any more questions, what we're gonna do is we're going to leave it for public comment, just to go through the discussion items first. That way, we can get through the actual discussion items, just in case some of those have more discussion around them. And then what we'll do is follow the agenda for the public comments. So next up is going to be the traffic control ordinance. So I'm gonna throw that over to our city manager.
Okay, well, we have Chief Scott McKee on, I believe, as well as Attorney Scott Baker. But essentially, if you recall, we had an arrangement with TIA, and they were able to conduct a traffic study. And to somewhat of our surprise, we found that a number of vehicles were turning along Sunnybrook in order to get to the crossover over 696. And part of that issue was related to the navigational systems were actually guiding them that way. So Chief McKee has indicated that he's issuing a traffic control ordinance, which also needs to subsequently get approval from the council. But I think even more importantly, he was able to contact the navigation system, such as Google, to have them modify their system so that they do not direct traffic along those residential streets. Scott McKee, are you able to speak?
Hi, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep, I mean Cheryl, you said that, you, you put it really perfectly. TIA Traffic Improvement Association conducted the study and found out that there was a disproportionate amount of vehicles that were traveling eastbound Sunnybrook, east of Southfield Road. So I am proposing that we do put a traffic control ordinance in place for no-through traffic, to try to limit the amount of vehicles that are using our residential streets to basically cut through to, to make, uh, when Southfield Road gets congested, to cut through the residential street to, to get onto Southfield Road. And I was successful in contacting a number of these GPS navigation companies. We did get some responses back saying that they are looking into it, and they're gonna make adjustments to their, to their navigation or to their maps. So I was pretty happy with our response so far.
Dan, thank you. And then, in addition to the cut through for Sunnybrook, the chief and I had an in-depth conversation about the issue of people breaking the speed limit, I guess, going through our streets. And also, I shouldn't even say breaking speed limits, because that's not just all their running stop signs and things like that. And I suggested, which the chief, you know, you can jump in anytime you want to, agreed that we should do a trial, or at least, chief, I don't know, what, 30, 60 days? What do you, 90 days?
Yeah, I would say, let's start with 30 days, and we can take a look at it in 30 days, but basically what the mayor is, our, our conversation was that we do a better job of keeping track of any type of traffic stops that occur, being that sometimes our officers issue verbal warnings. And unfortunately, we cannot track the verbal warnings, what it was for, were they residents, non-residents, were they cutting through, whatever the situation may be. So after having a conversation with the mayor, I actually put out a memo to our officers that they can still issue warnings, but they have to be written warnings, which will allow us to track all the traffic stops that are occurring throughout the city.
So, and the point of that is just to see, um, you know, where the troubled streets are? Also to see whether or not it is actually, is it residents or is it non-residents that are, are going through? Just to have a better understanding of the traffic that's, I guess, is an overflow, so, so to speak, through our streets. Um, so chief, when did you, you've already told them to start doing that.
That's correct. That memo was issued, I believe, last Fri- uh, excuse me. It would have been issued, it would have been issued last Friday.
So that would have been.
They are aware of it, and we are, I've already seen today, checking tickets throughout the weekend, that there were written warnings, there were written warnings issued over the weekend.
Okay, so we can actually check back in on, because our, our council meeting is gonna be changed from September 7th to the 14th because of Labor Day, right? So we can check back in. Actually, that gives us exactly 30 days from Friday to check in and see what that looks like.
Yep, I can, I can get a report for council. And just, just so, I can just add two other cents. You know, we've had, TIA has conducted a couple of traffic studies in the last six months to a year. And, you know, a lot of the complaints we get about traffic are that vehicles are speeding through the residential streets, and all of the traffic studies that TIA has performed really has indicated that, that is not a problem. I would say 85% to 95% of our traffic is below the speed limit. There are an occasional person speeding, but that is very few and far between, and, and I have the, the data to back that up. So I just wanted to let everyone know that.
When was the last time they did that study?
Well, the Sunnybrook one was, one of the indicators was speed, and they indicated that, again, 85% of the people were below the speed limit.
Only because that just to me, it just, and, you know, anyone else, of course, can chime in. To me, it does seem like it's, it's been an uptick in speeding on the thoroughfares. And I'm saying more or less the Santa Barbara, the, and the Bloomfield, Bloomfield Drive speeding through, but.
Well, if, if the council would like, I can actually have a traffic study done, but we just did, a few months back, we did one on Sunset and one on Eldorado for that northwest quadrant of the city, and, and both of those came back that speeding was not an issue.
I think this is gonna be something, this is just my opinion. I think that doing it this way for 30 days, we can see it. I don't know if there's really necessary to do another traffic study when we're kind of doing a ad hoc traffic study. So, um, does anyone else have an opinion about it?
Yeah, I've got some comments here. More, more about the traffic control order than the, than the study. I'm, I'm fine, or the, you know, the ad hoc study, or, you know, through the tickets is, is, makes, makes perfect sense. I think most, you know, I live on Sunnybrook, so I'm really familiar with the cut-through traffic on both sides of Southfield. And there's no question, especially on the east side of Southfield, that there's a lot of, a lot of cut-through, cut-through traffic just in the last couple of weeks. I've almost been hit twice with my dogs. And I've watched the car come down, and, you know, the cars come down and, you know, cut through. So it's, there's, there's no question. What I do have a question about is whether or not adding a sign is, it makes any sense. Can you give me, Cheryl, can you give my, the Bruce Cantor PC user, can you give me shareability? I want to share something. I'm gonna share a photo.
Are you able to do that in Caltech? I don't see it as an option.
Because, because right now it's telling me host, host disabled participant, I'm disabled for participant screen sharing. There we go. Okay, let's see who can share. Okay, so. So let's see. Now, let's see if it lets me. Okay, there we go. There we go. Yeah, okay, so, so what I, what I've put up right here is, is, is a picture of, of the intersection, near the intersection from, from Sunnybrook up to 11 Mile. There are, just in this picture, there are 26 road signs in less than a block. You know, you can see all the ones are circled in red, and, you know, I couldn't, I didn't have my wide, fully wide angle lens with me, but behind, you know, behind these, more, more north, there are another, I think, four signs, two on each side. There's so many signs here, you know, one, I don't think an additional sign, people already begin to pay any attention to it. We've had a ton of problems right here with illegal U-turns, so people come, come down the center lane here, they get in the center lane, they make an illegal U-turn to go the other way. And when people are coming out of Sunnybrook, you know, it's very many instances where people are close to getting broadsided by the people making the illegal U-turns. So in response to that, there are two signs here, two signs here, two signs here, two signs here. So there's eight signs for no U-turn. It, it doesn't act as a deterrent at all. It continues to happen. There's been no change in frequency since those signs have been put up. And so I really don't think putting a sign up there, other than making it look worse, is gonna do anything. I think what the answer is, is what, you know, first of all, what Scott said is getting a hold of the, of the wayfinding services and getting, you know, that routing taken off. And I think we need to do a lot more aggressive enforcement, because people are gonna ignore that sign. And from my understanding anyways, Scott Baker, correct me if I'm wrong, but if they turn down that street, and they're, they're not speeding, and they stop at the stop sign at the end of the street and turn right, we can't ticket them from going through, correct?
With, with the adoption of the traffic control ordinance, if the officer observes them using, utilizing that as a through street, then yes, they could, they could be ticketed if, if council were to adopt that, that traffic control ordinance.
Oh, well, that, 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 that changes my mind a little bit, because.
It's a very difficult, and Chief McKee and I discussed this, it's, it's a difficult ticket to enforce, because you, you almost have to stage someone at the end of the road to sit there and observe vehicles traveling through. But the, the numbers on the traffic control study were incredibly disproportionate. I think it was 430 eastbound vehicles to 50 westbound vehicles in a 24-hour period. So, you know, we talked about it, and I agree, there are a lot of signs there already. But, but simply creating the ordinance allows for the enforcement. I think that's gonna be more of a deterrent. Putting an officer there and having them write 400 tickets in a day is certainly gonna slow down some of that cut-through traffic.
Yeah, okay, though that, that, that changes my, my opinion a little bit, because, you know, the, the biggest piece was the last thing I was gonna mention, which was, which is what I thought. You know, I thought we had talked about a, a cut-through traffic at one point before, and, and I thought, maybe I misunderstood. I thought you said you can't enforce that. Maybe, maybe you can't enforce, maybe what you meant was you can't enforce it unless there's a sign that's posted.
Well, I think we were talking in reference to the Panera driver, and that, again, that's a little bit harder, because this road's a little bit unique. You can sit on Lathrop Boulevard and look westbound and see the entire length of the street.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Makes it a little bit more enforceable than, than, you know, someone coming through on California, leaving the Panera and snaking their way through the city to get to 696.
Yeah, well, I guess if the sign allows us then to ticket people for doing that, it makes it enforceable, then, then, yeah. I mean, the sign itself may not be a deterrent, but the fact that, you know, we can put somebody down there to write tickets, that might be.
Yeah, and from what I know, word does count when tickets start getting written consistently. So. I agree that we should do it.
Okay, so is there any other, um, questions or concerns towards the ordinance? Hey, Anne.
Hello, Mayor, everyone. Thank you for your patience.
Um. So you're talking about the traffic ordinance, and so that's something that, if I'm not mistaken, Scott, that we're gonna be adopting, is gonna be up for action items tonight. So is there any other discussions around that prior to us going to our meeting regarding it? Okay, hearing none. Welcome on. Site plan updates. So I'm gonna throw that over to our city manager again.
I just added to the agenda, because there's a number of properties that are facing various challenges. I just wanted to bring council up to date, and I asked Susie Steckton in particular to be here. In particular, I was talking in regards to the gas station and its status, the three buildings that are now owned under the ownership and operation of JMC. And there was another one, Susie, I can't remember which one.
It was the townhomes, I think, with the village, Lathrop Village Apartments?
Okay, so I could provide an update.
Yeah, um, so I'll start off with the, the gas station, since that one seems to be the easiest one to update on. He, I, I have been sending the property owner regular emails, probably at least once a week, every other week. He has run into some financing challenges and with his bank. So I, I told him, right now, he is at risk of his permit expiring, his building permit expiring in November, since it's been six months since he's done any work. He's also at risk of having his special land use approval expire because he hasn't done any work. So, um, I made sure to put that in an email form and said, hopefully this will help push your lenders along. And so that was at the end of last week, so I'm almost due for my next, my next email to him to ask, you know, to keep going with this, with the update. So it's still moving forward, just extremely, extremely slow. The JMC properties, they had a, Jill met with them a couple of weeks ago, the beginning of the month. They had, they were supposed to have been at the planning commission meeting in July and asked to have their items postponed, because they, they, they took issue with some of the comments about, that were in the review letter, that, you know, why should we have to do anything about lighting? We're not doing any improvements to the, you know, we're not making those improvements, and this, that, and the other things. So we had a meeting with them to, to go over the deficiencies in their site plan. They were supposed to have resubmitted their revised site plans last Tuesday. And, um, I followed up with them again today, since she'd actually, their property manager actually asked if the agenda was still on for tomorrow, which, that was discussed in their meeting, but they will be submitting, they will be submitting this week their revised plans. And those, it's the intent that those are reviewed at the September 15th Planning Commission meeting. So the architect responded to my email, indicating she'd have them this week. So I expect that to happen. The, we're also still waiting on the final reports from the fire marshal, related to the inspections that occurred on the July 24th and 31st. Once we have those, Jim will compile, finish compiling a comprehensive building report. And we've also been tracking all the code, the code violations that are, um, identified. And so we'll be providing that to the property owner once, once that's all finished. It's, um, there were some, some pretty, there's some pretty significant improvements that are gonna need to be made to all three of those buildings. So, um, and one second. Not a single quiet spot in my house. Um, and, so, and we also received communication from them, basically asking for grace as they move forward to making improvements to their buildings. So, um, there's still quite a ways to go. And then the Lathrop Village Town Homes, or Lathrop Village Apartments, sorry. They, um, they are moving forward with the final phase of their building, of their construction. I know Jill and Scott have talked about the process to get them, to move them forward for, in terms of planning commission and site plan approval. It's been a couple of years since their site plan approval has expired. So we're gonna, but nothing's changed. So we're gonna move forward with administrative approval on their site plans. And then they actually also have building permits that they pulled in January of last year, which have since expired. So they'll have to renew their building permits and just do administrative review and begin construction, hopefully, before the weather starts to hit us. And that, that's it in a nutshell.
So where, can I ask where that construction is going? Is it right in front of the other location?
For the, the townhomes or the apartments?
The apartments.
Yes, those are gonna be right facing, um, they're facing 11 Mile in front of the other two buildings.
Okay.
Any other questions? So I want to go back to, um, discussion item A, the marijuana ordinance and permit process update. Anne, did you have any updates from the committee? I know that Saleem can't be here, and he said that you might have an update.
Yeah, not from the committee, but we, Saleem and I met with Sam Surnow and Rob Crockmo last week at their offices, and they proceeded to, I think Susie already saw this, and I think Bruce has seen this, in the planning commission meeting. So they showed us a rendering of the now defunct Happy's Pizza location. And if you would allow me to share my desktop, I can.
No.
But I, I'll give you an update.
Because I'm, I'm really confused, and this is why I sent back to Saleem, what that update has to do with the marijuana committee?
Well, it, yes, it, it has something to do with it, because they proceeded to tell us that they have been getting a lot of inquiries about that location, solicitation from that location. And most of those inquiries are, are coming from marijuana operators.
So here's, here's the issue that, you know, we have to be careful of, of being the elected officials of the city and not making a decision yet, or rather than that, we're gonna even entertain having marijuana in the city, is that not one particular person has perceived advantage over anybody else. You know what I'm saying? Because that, that, that's what I was concerned about. And I mean, you and I, we can talk later if you want to, but that is, I'm sure all of us have had some, some business owner in Lathrop to approach us about being approached by another business entity about marijuana. So I just, you know, I'm just saying to be extremely careful with that. And Scott Baker, if you wanna kind of, I don't know, there's something legalist that you want to say, but I think we all need to be very careful in, um, appearing to have, what's the word, what am I looking for? To give advantage to one particular business owner over another. And I'm not saying that you are. I'm just saying that I think that's something that we all need to really be conscious about.
Yeah, well, let me finish the statement. So we didn't request this meeting, Saleem and I. We have no horse in the race whatsoever. I've been saying that since day one. I, I don't even know how to communicate it any further than that. They wanted to meet with us to find out where we were in the process. Saleem and I explained where we were in the process. We actually brought to council the, um, the committee's recommendation. And we talked about this at the last meeting, and I, we explained in detail what that was. And then they shared information with us, saying that they're getting a lot of solicitations, not just from marijuana people, but everyone in general, not knowing that they're going to update that, that strip mall. And then he proceeded to show us the rendering. So again, I could state, because Saleem's not here, we have no horse in this race.
My thing is, is I'm just.
And we have no, we have no, we're not, we're, we don't have any preference, if that's the problem. We're not even thinking, we're actually not thinking about. Right, we're not even thinking about who, who's soliciting them. Or who is not soliciting them. We just went to a meeting to give them an update, and that's all we did.
So I don't know if you and I can talk more, because again, that, that's, um,
I mean, I, I could only, I could only make this statement for the last four. I mean, I, I could only, I could only make this statement, for the last four years, every month I've met with Sam Surnow. When marijuana wasn't even on the table, I met with him to try to understand what we're gonna do with the school. Scott Baker is fully aware that I have been meeting with Sam Surnow every month for four years to find out, get an update, where he is with Panera. He's shared openly what he's doing with his business. That has nothing to do with what I do with council. Because I was elected to find out or to, to try to do something to move the city forward, one of which this, the, the city has not done anything with because they don't own the property and that's the school. I don't think it's a secret that, I don't think, but, hold on a second.
It's about having the conversation with all council members, so we don't feel, the rest of us don't feel like we don't have a idea of what, what's going on, you know, so that's where I, I, as also being elected to, to represent the city and us being together as a, as a, like a board of understanding what's going on, if that, it concerns.
I don't think you should be concerned, because in every instance, when I have met with them, I've communicated that to everyone. I have not met in secret with anyone. That is not what I do. And I've said that from.
I think you and I need to talk offline, because I don't think that you're getting the full story of other things that's going on in the city that's been discussed with us too, so. Um, we'll, we'll take this offline to have a discussion, because I, I'm, and that's the reason why I'm having an uncomfortable feeling with this, and Scott, I don't know, you were about to say something.
No, I was just gonna say that it's, it's, I mean, I think you hit the nail on the head. There's gonna be a lot of different people that are interested in, in not only obtaining licenses, but there's gonna be different business owners that are gonna wanna sell or lease their properties to these potential applicants, so. I think the, the best course of action for all council members is if they, if they do get an inquiry or they do get a request for information, defer them over to the, the city staff or myself or to the planner. That way it doesn't appear, what Kelly's saying, it doesn't appear as if, you know, someone comes in and let's just say, I buy one of Jet's old buildings and I, I decide I'm gonna turn it into a provisioning center. Well, you know, and I go back and I watch these meetings and I see that Ian's been talking to Sam Surnow about utilizing his property. It, it creates an appearance that perhaps he already has a leg up with the council, given his history of dialogue on the issue, so. Again, you know, not, not saying that Ian has done anything wrong or, or that his involvement with Sam over the years is a problem. But with respect to this issue, it, it should, any inquiry should be directed, directed to staff, myself, or to the planner. If they want updates on where we are with the ordinance, it just, it, it keeps it a cleaner appearance and then no one can come back and make allegations that, that aren't true, but obviously would, would create some issue, cuz, you know, and I think we kinda talked about this before. These people, you know, they probably won't take no lightly. And if, if they feel that there was some impropriety done, they won't hesitate to, to have a court make a decision on that, so. It's really important to just keep everything above board, all discussions go through city, city staff or planners and you know, that way, that way you're all protected as individuals as well as council members.
Yeah, I agree with that, and like I said before, I, I don't have any horse in this race. Actually, when we met with them, we just met with them because they wanted an update, that was it. We didn't talk about any potential people that could be setting up businesses, because no one solicited either Saleem or myself to set up a business in Lathrop Village. And if they did, I would direct them to Cheryl Mitchell. We don't have any phone numbers at all that anyone has.
I would encourage you also, Ian, if somebody's calling you, as I will tell you, at least four to five people, maybe weekly or every two weeks, is calling and ask us where we are and they are referred back to the city or to the point of saying that we're still working on it. Because you may think that it is, you know, you having a horse in a race, which I don't think, you know, while I'm speaking for me, I don't have a horse in a race, cuz I don't know what I'm gonna decide, truthfully. But the fact is, is that I'm also not gonna ever be put in a position where I'm looking like I'm giving someone an unfair advantage over another business. So I would just say for all of us, suggestion or not, that when there's anything that has to do with our marijuana ordinance, the idea of a marijuana business coming to Lathrop, that we refer everything back to the city manager or to the planners about it and, and, and keep yourself just, you know, clean out of it. And I mean, and I'm not saying that you are in anything, no one's in anything, but I'm just saying, while we're in this situation, um, I, I just think that we don't wanna have any issues that happens that could be legal issues towards individuals or towards the city. And that's where I come into play to protect the city from any type of legal issues.
I agree with that totally, and I, I have no statement other than I agree with you. I referred anybody that's contacted any one of the, the members to either Scott Baker or anyone at the city, that's all we've done.
So from this, from, so can we say then that if we have any, and I think I'm probably repeating what you said, just, just in a different way, Ian. That if we do have any approaches from any business owners, we send them straight to the office or to Scott Baker. As a council, we, we have no conversations, I mean, no, they'll ask a question or, you know, and we can just say, we're working on it, if you want more information, contact the city, is that what we're saying?
So the, what I'm saying is that, yes, that's what you should do, but it's totally up to you what you wanna do. However, to make this clean, to make it where we don't find ourselves in any legal issues or find individuals in any legal issues, it's probably best to say we're currently working on them. I have declined everyone that's asked me to help with us putting our ordinance together, you know. I, I just, it's a touchy situation right now and it's best that as elected and as people, as being people that's under a microscope too, that you refer it back to. Exactly, I, I have to, you know, side on the side of, of what our city attorney is saying in that sense. And I know we all know somebody, if not twelve hundred bodies, that wanna go into the marijuana business and they've contacted you, you know, so.
Yeah, okay.
On an unrelated note, um, did you say Happy's went out?
They're being renovated.
Yeah, but you started the conversation by saying Happy's was defunct.
I, I have to refer this to the, the city esquire to give us an update.
Maybe over to Suzie Stack.
I don't know anything about Happy's.
I'll go over to her, her, her director of development. Happy's, Happy's, they were changing things up. It was gonna be Happy's, then Happy's was gonna go out and they were gonna be doing a, changing up their concept and doing pizza and sliders as sort of a fast casual type of dining experience. Last I knew, Happy's was still gonna be there, but it's entirely possible that it's gone back to by Happy's and I will find out specifically from Sam what that is, but last I knew it was gonna be pizza and sliders.
All right, sorry about that, just, I got a little nervous, I always want us to not, Ian, it's a good day when you're not in the news, my mom had told me, so I just wanna make sure we we do that, so. Or we do the site plan updates and so the agenda items, anything that's on the agenda that we need to discuss.
Are we, just a quick question on Kira Bolden's presentation? Is that happening, or how long is that presentation, or is it?
It's postponed to the twenty eighth, she's not coming today.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I didn't see that.
Was there anything that anyone wanted to discuss this on today's agenda?
No, it's all pretty straightforward.
So we're looking at, what, nine o'clock, eight o'clock, no?
Thanks, Tess. One thing I did want to mention, though, there was an email communication from the Lathrop Village Historical Society and that they're looking for office space because their lease is not being renewed under the new management company. So I didn't know if you wanted to talk about that at all and I invited Cory to be here, because as you recall, she was doing the the survey to identify potential uses for this space in the lower level.
So let's, um, jump down to see if there's any public comments, which I saw that there was one that was left over from the proposal, and then, yes, to talk about the historical society. Oh.
I thought I saw one question for Bruce, they were asking the average cost to the homeowners for the proposed millage.
Well, it's three, three point nine one seven six mils, three point nine one seven six mils. And so for the average, the average homeowner in Lathrop, who, in, in Lathrop, the average taxable value across all properties is sixty seven thousand dollars, so that comes out to two hundred and ninety two dollars per, per year, I believe is what it was. Or another way to think of it is it's about three hundred and ninety one dollars for every hundred thousand dollars in taxable value of your home. And the key, the key thing there is taxable value, not the actual value of your home, a lot of people get that confused. You know, the, the taxable value is typically much lower than, than the actual value of your home. And you can find that off of your, your yearly Oakland County assessor's statement, what your taxable value is. And, and on, on fixlvroads.com there is a view my cost button where you can click that button and then you can find your house, click on it and it'll tell you not only what your current taxable value is, but also what, what this millage will, will cost you on a, on a per year basis.
Thank you, that looks like that is the only question that we had, and I don't even believe that Lillian is still here, but, okay.
Hey Bruce, just a quick question. Did you get a chance to look at the culverts on Catalpa? Close to Catalpa Oaks. Ridden your bike down there yet? You should ride by there, find out from Scott Wrangler if he's actually doing that work, cuz it looks really good over there. They've done a really good job at expanding the, the culverts. And they, they appear to be really efficient, more so efficient than before. So if you ride by there, you'll see what I'm talking about, just right before you get to Catalpa Oaks, you just ride, you'll see all the new sections, right, on both sides, and you'll see, you'll see how it's graded. And the question I have is, so they're using the metal culvert, right? So I don't think they changed to a PVC. And it looks like they're able to get more water through there. I'm just trying to figure out if Scott's doing that job or if somebody else is, and what, what does he really think about how it's done there?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know if he's doing that job or not, I know we've talked about the materials for the culvert. You know, and he, he feels that the PVC pipe is, is adequate and actually he feels a smaller pipe than what's been used is, is adequate for the amount of water flow.
Okay, so let's, you all have any other comments regarding that?
Well, I think Cory's online now.
What, Ian, can you say, tell me where that is again, I'd just like to take a peek at it as well, where was it?
I'll text it to you.
Cool, thank you.
So, um, skipping over to the historical society, we all received an email and it was also online about the historical society losing, well, it wasn't a lease, their donated office space. I'm gonna say it's in one of Jet's old buildings, I can only assume that that's what it was, cuz I didn't look at the addresses if I remember correctly, but you all are shaking, yeah, so I'm accurate, so. Their ask is rather or not, we know someone that would donate space or would give space at a discounted rate and/or would we also donate if, if you had opportunity. So Bruce brought it up, the fact is that that was on our, was that, was it considered recreation? Whatever the survey was that we did at the last meeting with Cory, had the historical historical society part in it. And the question was, should we expedite it to accommodate the historical society? And that is where I'll put my dot, 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 because that's where the manager and Cory will jump in at that point.
Right, just let me, let me just clarify that, my, 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 my statement was, if we decide, if we decide that you know, the historical society should use that space, should we fast track it? So obviously that hasn't been decided yet. So, so that was, there was an if in front of that, in front of that.
Sorry, but incorrectly quote you.
But there, there was a, there was a correction there, right? So it, I think Bruce mentioned the historical society space and I think it was like a combo where you can use it for something else, correct?
Yeah, museum, I think, museum, I think we had talked about as well, the combo.
Yeah, so what we were looking at for the historical society, it was a museum area, not necessarily like an archive area, but a museum area, so then it would have benefit to the public as well. So that was our original plan, well, process, one of the options for the historical society was to have a museum area where then the public could use it, they could see the displays and everything.
Okay.
And so you're not finished with that. I mean, we're not, we haven't finished the whole survey, you have to determine what the overall general public wants or suggests for that, right?
Right, so also since the last time I spoke to you all, we've kind of looked at a different direction. Since then, me and Chris toured the police area and City Hall. We're now looking at one of our options being an expansion of the police station into that space because of their current situation. They have very limited locker room space for both the men and women locker rooms. Their storage is very limited as well, they have to like cross over to an area. Are you all familiar with the basement of the city hall?
Yep.
So like that area, when you walk down to the basement and there's all those doors with, there's like a bathroom, other city storage. One of those closets is for the police station storage. Upstairs, they're very crammed, their room is like a multi area. So what we were, as like now our main, we were looking was to expand that basement for the police while also putting a multipurpose area in there. And that multipurpose area, so they could do trainings, would also be open and available for city and public use too.
And, um, Dr. Cheryl, you were, you sent something else out regarding the need from the city first, and is that the same thing?
Yes, the internal needs for space is extreme. So unless we're looking at a new building for the police station, at least making use of that space now, so that they can accommodate some of their more immediate needs makes sense. One of the challenges, even if we were to consider it for a community organization, is that there should be a public purpose associated with that, which would be a concern if it's just storage. Also, in regards to artifacts, which have some historic value, if nothing else, it gets wet down there. So the ability to maintain any artifact safely would be a little bit of a challenge while we're trying to address whatever inflows from the water that we seem to have periodically down there.
Bruce, did you have any, um, wasn't you that just brought it up about the, do you have any other questions real quick?
Brought up about what?
The historical society.
Oh, no, I was, I, I, the only, my only, the issue that I sent an email to you guys was, you know, if we were thinking about the historical society, which it now thinks we're, looks like we're going in a, in a different direction. But had we been doing that, we should probably expedite it, given their situation, but it's, it's a moot point at this point.
Okay.
I would like to add, I did reach out to the Southfield Library to find out if they had any ability to accommodate their needs on a short term basis, or even if they had any suggestions for an alternative location for them. So I have not heard back, I just sent that today. for an alternative location for them. So I have not heard back. I just sent that today.
Thank you for being, uh, proactive. Okay. So, um, is there any other public comments? Is there anything, Kelda, in the chat?
No.
Okay.
In the chat.
Any council comments for, um, the study session? Okay, um, while you have three minutes before the actual meeting, it's still on this particular Zoom, right?
No.
No.
There's a new.
Okay. So, well then I will adjourn this meeting, um, and then we'll join again in a different spot.
And the link is on the agenda and a separate email was sent out as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.